Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I'm the City Council President. Viewers can watch this City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones, electronic devices, please. Thank you. I'd also like to ask everybody to be respectful of each other. I'd like to ask my City Council colleagues to be respectful of our colleagues, to be respectful of the staff, to be respectful of everyone that's in this room. I'd also ask the public to be respectful as well. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave. And if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. As you know, the public is not allowed to testify during Wednesday's City Council meeting. If people want to speak, please hit the button and I'll try to call on you. Please don't speak without permission from the chair. And if I ask you, and if I haven't called on you and you continue to speak, I'm going to ask you to, please, I'll give you several warnings and I'll ask you, please, do not disrupt the meeting. According to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. And if the public comes in with signs while the meeting is happening, I'm going to repeat that again, that there are no signs allowed in the chamber. People in the chamber have to be respectful to each other. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louis Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Worrell. A quorum is present.
I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Today's clergy, I'm going to ask City Counselor Louis Jean to please come to the podium and introduce our clergy today. Before we do that, Mr. Clerk, will you please ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Mejia is present? Counselor Louis Jean.
Thank you, President Flynn. Messy ampile, President Flynn. I have the honor of introducing our clergy today, Pastor Kiki, in honor of Haitian Flag Day. Haitian Flag Day, for those who do not know, is tomorrow, May 18th. It is one of the most celebrated and most important holidays in Haitian culture. And we celebrate our flag tomorrow at noon. There will be a flag-raising ceremony that my office is sponsoring outside for the Haitian community and for everyone. We welcome everyone to be there. And then afterwards, we know that there is an ongoing humanitarian and political crisis in Haiti. We will be gathering in front of the federal building tomorrow, the McCormick Building right next door, sorry, the Kennedy Building, to demand an end to the crisis in Haiti. And so I am grateful for this Haitian flag. I was born here, as many of you know, but my father, who is right behind that camera, was born in Haiti together with my mother. And this flag and this history is incredibly important to us. It was sewn together by Catherine Flan, who is the goddaughter of one of Haiti's liberators, Jean Jacques Dessalines. Haiti is the first free black republic on the Western Hemisphere, the only country founded as a result of a slave revolt. And so its story and the fight, the 13-year fight for liberation, is important not only to the world, but especially to the cause of black liberation. And so the way that the flag was founded was by taking the French flag. There are several different stories, but lore has it. We took the tri-color French flag and the white was stripped out of it. So it was just a blue and red flag. Over the years, it was altered and this white part was added in the middle with a coat of arms that says "L'Union fait la force." Unity makes us strong, a lesson that we can all learn from still today. So while I introduce Pastor Kiki, who is here, his official name is Pastor Diopho Jean-Fleurissant, known to many of us as Pastor Kiki, is a native of Haiti, serves as the president of True Alliance Center, chair of Haitian Americans United Incorporated, and a member of Mayor Coalition. Pastor Fleury-Song has extensive experience working with the Haitian community as an advocate for social justice both in Haiti and the United States. He immigrated to the United States as a young adult at the age of 20, was undocumented, and did a number of odd jobs. He was homeless for a few weeks in Brooklyn, New York, and understands what it means to be undocumented and a lonely stranger in a foreign country. At a very young age, he founded a lot of organizations. Pastor Kiki is a founder and senior pastor of Total Health Christian Ministries, has a passion for ministry. At an early age, he served as Sunday School teacher, youth director, and executive committee board member. He's done missionary work around the country, around the world, including the Dominican Republic, Bahamas, and Haiti. He's delivered the teaching of God and conducts seminars for youth. Pastor Kiki earned an associate's degree in accounting from Bunker Hill Community College and a degree in economics at Gordon College. He completed a master's of divinity and a master's of theology from Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. He's also a small business owner and a community leader that hosts radio and television shows on diverse topics. He's a board member of GBIO, a faith-based organization that advocates for social and economic justice. He's a president and founder of True Alliance Center, chief advocacy officer at IFC. The list is very long. And he has done a number of work in the Matapan community and Boston as a whole. I have the privilege of welcoming Pastor Kiki, who I lovingly call my second father. Pastor Kiki, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much, Honorable Counselor Louis Jean, for having me again at this time. Last year I was here. I'm so grateful and so blessed to be with all of you in the spirit of thankfulness. Thank you, all of you, this diverse body, for your LLC. Just people may think that's the limited liability corporation. This is not. Your LLC, meaning your love, your leadership, and your commitment to improving the lives of all immigrants around Massachusetts. Thank you so much. Lord, let us pray. Sovereign Lord, we pray for our city, your city, the city of Boston, the entire municipalities at large, and district councils as well. I pray, Father, that peace would displace war, health would replace sickness, contentment would replace hunger and thirst, understanding would replace suspicion, compassion would replace apathy, hope would replace despair, and that the love, the leadership, and the commitment would be heard, known, and understood in every community, bringing hope to those who are struggling. Give them, Lord, steadfast hearts, which no unworthy thought can drag down, unconquered hearts, which no tribulation can wear out. Give them upright hearts, which no unworthy purpose may tempt them aside. Father, as nothing escapes your presence, nothing is beyond your care or too hard for you to take on, whether it concerns nations or individuals. Oh gracious and holy Father, give them the wisdom to perceive you, intelligence to understand you, diligence to seek you, patience to wait for you, eyes to see you, a heart to meditate on you, and a life, Father, to look for others. We ask, and I ask all this through the power of the Holy Spirit in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
And just want to say, if I didn't say the time, the flag-raising is at noon tomorrow. And thank you to Counselor Flaherty for switching days with me so we could honor Haitian Flag Day. Messy ampile. Thank you, everyone.
At this time, could everyone join us in the Pledge of Believers? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, can we ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Arroyo and Counselor Baker are present? The approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing, hearing no objection on the matter. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her honor the mayor. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0944? Now, let's go on. Let's go on with communications from our mayor.
Docket number 0930, message and ordinance amending City Council Electoral Districts filed in the office of the city clerk on May 15, 2023.
Mr. Clerk, the chair recognizes Counselor Louis Jean. Counselor Louis Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At the discretion of the President, I make a motion to take out of order dockets 0941 and 0942 together with docket 0930.
Mr. Clerk, on those dockets, would you please read them into the record?
Docket number 0941, Counsel Lara for the following: Ordinance amending City Council Electoral Districts. And docket number 0942, Counsel Louis Jean for the following: Ordinance amending City Council Electoral Districts.
These three dockets will be placed in the Committee on Civil Rights. At this time, the chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a late-file matter on the same subject matter. If it could be so added and directed to the same committee.
Hearing no objection, Counsel Flaherty's late file will be read into the record. Does everybody have a copy of this document? We'll take a minute just to ensure everyone has a copy of it. Everyone does. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, Mr. Clerk, please read that in the record.
Offered by Counselor Michael Flaherty, an ordinance amending City Council Electoral Districts.
Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like that to be added to the other three dockets.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. That also will be added to the Committee on Civil Rights. We're going back to communications from her honor the mayor.
Docket number 0931, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation of bike helmets valued at $2,300 donated by Brickstone White &amp; Gluck, located at 2 Center Plaza, Room 530, Boston, Mass. 02108. The purpose of the donation is to increase children's participation in outdoor activities in the city of Boston. And docket number 0932, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation of helmets valued at $2,000 donated by Boston Children's Hospital, located at 300 Longwood Ave., Boston, Mass. 02115. The donation provides helmets for the children of Boston to keep them safe as they learn to ride a bike at one of the 10 locations around the city of Boston this summer.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden, the chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, Communities. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a small, very generous, and very well-needed donation of bike helmets. So many of our young people are now bicycling and more and more folks are on the road. And an important piece of that is to have access to protective equipment as we cycle through our city. So I would ask that we accept this donation and vote to accept and expend this generous donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0931. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0932. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, we're back to reports of public offices and others.
Docket number 0933, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of April 26, 2023. Docket number 0934, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of May 3, 2023.
Thank you. These two dockets, 0933, 0934, they'll be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, the next dockets are 0935 through 0937.
Docket number 0935, communication was received from Counsel Liz Braden submitting documents regarding redistricting litigation. Docket number 0936, communication was received from Counsel Liz Braden submitting documents regarding minutes of the Committee on Redistricting and messages of disapproval. And docket number 0937, communication was received from Counsel Liz Braden submitting documents regarding redistricting archival records.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the chairs, thank you for recognizing me. I enfiled these three communications related to redistricting to submit several items into the record in order to make available to counselors and members of the public that I believe provides some crucial context for the remainder of the redistricting process. And I would ask that these documents be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights, which, under the leadership of Counsel Louis Jean, who will be taking up this matter. The docket 0935 provides several documents filed in redistricting litigation involving the city of Boston among defendants, including arguments submitted on our behalf by the defense counsel. In particular, I believe that further redistricting deliberation by our body must take into consideration our full familiarity with the report of Dr. Lisa Handley on the analysis of voting patterns by race and assessment of minority voters' opportunities to elect candidates in recent municipal elections, defendant's opposition to the plaintiff's motion for a preliminary injunction and affidavit of Professor Moon Dushin. And docket 0936 provides all of the minutes of the Committee on Redistricting's hearings, meetings, and working sessions from previous redistricting cycles, but also held on our minutes from the redistricting committee of 2021, 2022, as well as the redistricting cycle, the preceding redistricting cycle of 2011 to 2012. I include these to illustrate that proposed changes affecting the neighborhood, which neighborhoods were deliberated and debated through a public engagement process prior to final action and to document that these which issues continue to be brought up decade after decade. We keep dealing with this. Every 10 years, we have to deal with the same issues. I also include the message from, the disapproval messages from Mayor Menino to help draw context to why the current districts were drawn in the way that they are. Balancing the required and optional redistricting principles does not mean we need to go back to the, put back the clock by undoing certain boundary shifts. We should understand the redistricting history of those who have advocated decade after decade, and we do not need to start over from square one. And finally, docket 0937 compiles certain redistricting archival records, including our redistricting-enabling legislation and the report of the Special Committee on Electoral Districts dated way back in August 10, 1983, and then the first map, which was also invalidated by the court in 1983. In pertinent part, the report states that after the map was enjoined and threw the election calendar into chaos, many residents expressed their deeply-held conviction that the council should make as few changes as possible in the plan as originally drawn and enacted. It includes the Home Rule petition, providing emergency election procedures for the city of Boston in the year of 1983 only, which was passed by the council and approved by the mayor and enacted by the House and the Senate and signed by the governor, all within 10 days. And also, the author authorizing, the author, that order at the time authorized the City Council to hire a private counsel to represent the body in redistricting legislation. I just wanted to provide all these documents and put them into the record and send them to the Committee on Civil Rights just to give the public and those watching some context that we didn't arrive at this place by accident and there's a long history behind it. So thank you for your consideration. And I look forward to and being fully engaged in this redistricting process, as I hope all of our colleagues will be as well. We are, time is of the essence. We need to produce, this body is tasked with the job of producing a map that we can vote, a majority of us can vote for. And I hope that we can get there in the next week. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. These dockets, 0935 to 0937, will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights, Immigration Advancement. Mr. Clerk, we're on to the next dockets.
Docket number 0938, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Donald Wright to the Public Facilities Commission.
Do you want to read, do you want to continue 3940?
Docket number 0939, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Maya Geter as a member of the Boston ASME Council 93, AFL-CAO Housing Trust Fund. And docket number 0940, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of John Romano as a member of the Boston ASME Council 93, AFL-CAO Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These dockets, 0938 to 0940, they'll be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, we're on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0928, notice was received from Adam Cedarbaum Corporation Counsel providing an update on the lawsuit that was filed against the Boston City Council in U.S. District Court for the District of Massachusetts. Case number 122CV12048, Rashid Walters et al. versus Boston City Council et al.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jean. Counsel Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President. On Monday, May 15th, the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement held a hearing regarding the federal court order to pass a new council district map as notice received from Adam Cedarbaum Corporation Counsel providing update on the lawsuit filed against the Boston City Council in United States District Court for the District of Massachusetts. Case number 122-CV-12048, Rashid Walters et al. versus Boston City Council et al. The communication states that Judge Saris invalidated the map as approved by the City Council on November 2, 2022, and enjoined the city from conducting the 2023 election for district council seats using that map. A copy of the decision is made part of the communication as Exhibit A. Complying with the court order will require this body to pass a map quickly, as Counselor Braden stated, on a timeline that will allow for the Elections Department to furnish nomination papers for candidates, certify signatures, print ballots, and facilitate mail-in voting for the preliminary and general election. Furthermore, I want to thank the redistricting chair, Liz Braden, for her efforts in getting us to this point. Her efforts were enormous, and it's a credit to her and her staff to deserve our thanks. I also want to thank all of my council colleagues who were present on Monday. Thank you to all the councils and the public for an extended recess of 1 hour and 15 minutes to ensure the committee and the council as a whole is on solid legal footing. Of note, the committee is committed to working with President Flynn, everyone here on the City Council, the mayor, and members of the public to schedule and work together as necessary to bring about a timely redistricting map as the court has ordered. I heard valuable testimony from my colleagues. From the committee heard a desire to keep communities of interest united and uphold core values of redistricting, including compactness, contiguity, respect for municipal boundaries, and of course, the legal principles that are in the background, one person, one vote, equal population, and compliance with the Voting Rights Act. The committee heard that although there was a ruling that said that there was a likely constitutional violation between D3 and 4, there will be a domino effect on other districts. The committee heard councils express that the redistricting issues are a solvable problem. Better we do it here than it be done for us. I heard valuable testimony from residents. Specifically, I want to say thank you to Gias Mento, Sam Pierce, John Malouf, Barry Lawton, Sophie Marking, Pei Ying Yu, and all the members of the Chinese Progressive Association who attended. The committee will hold this docket in committee and have its hearing expeditiously together with the dockets that have already been placed in the Civil Rights Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jean. This docket will remain in committee. I also want to acknowledge the constituents of mine that were here as well from the Chinese Progressive Association. And Counselor Louis Jean, I think the right decision was taking a recess, taking a break so you could get the right advice in legal counsel. I think that was exactly the right move. If it takes five minutes or it takes an hour and a half, it doesn't matter. We're here and we need to get the right information. And if we have to wait, that's okay. So I support that time wait. And we want to make sure we get things right, and it doesn't have to be quick. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Clerk, please read the next docket.
Docket 0760 through 0762, orders for the fiscal year 24 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the school department and for other post-employment benefits. Dockets 0763, 0765, and 0766, orders for capital fund transfer appropriations. Dockets 0764, 0767, and 0768, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements. Docket numbers 0769 through 0782, orders for authorizing limits for departmental revolving funds for fiscal year 24, including law, tourism... funds for fiscal year 24, including law, tourism, arts and culture, environment, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, schools, and parks, Parkman Fund, and PEG Access Fund.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. The chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. A right time for the best report ever. Mr. President, on May 11, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee on Ways and Means held two hearings on the Boston Police Department regarding the FY24 budget. I was joined by my council colleagues, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Flaherty, Councilor Arroyo. The administration panel included Michael Cox, the Police Commissioner, Lisa O'Brien, the Chief Bureau and Administration and Technology, Nicole Taub, the Chief of Staff, Gregory Long, the Superintendent in Chief, La Nita Kalanane, the Superintendent Bureau of Field Services, and Felipe Colon, the Superintendent Bureau of Investigative Services. During the first BPD hearing, we discussed concerns regarding community engagement, police accountability, and officer well-being in terms of their mental health or mental health services access. The public testimonies stressed addressed issues of divestment of funds from the Police Department into community needs. These needs included housing and mental health programs such as community mental health crisis response, police misconduct and accountability, and a need for closure in investigations around neighborhoods such as East Boston. My council colleagues highlighted the expansion of technology that promotes community safety such as Body Cam, the investigative process, and how allegations of misconduct are addressed and reconciled, and how we can strengthen trust between the police and Boston community. We also covered issues emphasizing the need for culturally appropriate approaches and collaboration with departments to enhance the quality of life for residents, senior engagement, civilian openings, retention of personnel, and improved 911 operations. BPD also shared their need for additional funding for crime scene processing. By addressing these concerns, the city of Boston can work towards promoting equitable, transparent, and more community-centered policing practices, as reported by the panelists. I request that this docket in particular stay in committee. The afternoon's hearing, the, I was joined by, also, sorry, also hearing to discuss Boston Public, Boston Police Department. I was joined by my council colleagues, Council Flynn, Council Arroyo, Council Baker, and Council Rurrell. We first discussed civil services reforms. The department spoke about exploring ways to make civil service system more inclusive and efficient as it currently limits their recruitment pool, still being a majority white police officers or personnel department. Then we discussed retirement and staffing. The department was asked to address the discrepancy between retiring personnel, which averages 122 people per year, and new hires, which is approximately 85 to 90 people per year, and the efforts in promoting retention of academy classes, class members. In regards to allocations of funds in contractual service budget, 1.9 million, the department informed us that this budget will be encumbered before June 30 for the detective's exam in the upcoming fiscal year, and that we should expect a significant reduction in the number within the next few weeks. Lastly, we discussed the allocation of funds for auto energy and supplies to ensure alignment with the department's and city's goals and priorities. The city councils looking forward to continuing for this transparent conversation, and this chair informed them that I would be requesting that they're present in a working session if so needed for amendment process. On May 15, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee on Ways and Means held a budget hearing on Boston Public Schools regarding FY24 budget. The discussion began with the budget presentations from the panelists, which included Mary Skipper, Superintendent Dr. Linda Chen, Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Depina, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Dr. Drew Alchilson, Chief of Schools and Accountability, Dr. Anna Tavars, Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Community and Family Engagement, Nate Cooter, Chief Financial Officer, and David Bloom, Deputy Chief Financial Officer. For round one, we, I was joined by my council colleagues, Council Coletta, Flynn, Rurrell, and Council Braden. We began the hearing by highlighting importance of addressing students' health needs, providing transparent work programs, fostering inclusion, recruiting diverse staff, and supporting Latinx students in terms of language access and their families as well. We also discussed the accountability and adequate presentation of the student population and hiring, assisting families navigating the Boston Public School system, promoting partnerships, and peer programs between schools and colleges. In closing, I requested clarification just around positions per school and by region, the response in detail of following information, and I'm happy to provide it to you in this report or otherwise if requested through the chair. For round two, I was joined by Council Coletta, Rurrell, Flynn, Mejia, and Council Flaherty. And in the second round, the allocation of remaining 247 million in department's budget and their plans for utilizing those funds. The JROTC program and its funding, school facility repairs and renovations, including athletic facilities, integration of environmental justice studies into the school curriculum, the expansion of paid internship students, and budget breakdown of arts expansion for the arts in schools. And then finally, we wrapped it up with Councilor Mejia and Council Flaherty, where we discussed importance of STEM vocational programs, budget cuts, programs prioritization, air ventilation and quality in schools, and accounting for families and students leaving BPS. On May 16, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee on Ways and Means, I held a hearing for the Boston, hearing on the Boston Fire Department regarding FY24 budget as well. I was joined by council colleagues, President, Council President Flynn, Braden, and Councilor Murphy. The administrative panel included Paul Burke, Fire Commissioner and Chief of Boston Fire Department, Robert Colabrisi, Chief of Field Services, Rodney Marshall, Chief of Support Services, Michael Gaskins, and Fire Department Diversity Officer. I think there were other councillors in the room. Council Coletta at some point joined us, and I forget my other colleagues, I apologize that it's not included here. During this hearing, the department discussed their needs, which included adding new cadets, renovating the cleaning existing firehouses, finding a new location for Special Operations Command, and addressing staffing limits in fire trucks. They also explored the impact of staffing on insurance ratings and discussed servicing new developments and planning for new firehouses. The Boston Fire Department inquired about unions for underpaid civilian workers and considering encouraging community members to participating, just expressing that their civilian personnel were not getting paid adequately, so being one of the reasons why they could not retain staff as well. Also, the issue around diversity and the fire cadet program not being sufficient to increase diversity. The panelists explained that the process also included white women or female as a minority or underrepresented population, so therefore, even if you see that the cadet program, a majority was a white population and not diverse, that that's why it would include female officers as well. We also discussed just getting more staff or maybe creating a program where the fire program, the fire department would have their own carpenter, carpenters, electricians, or just repair folks, as opposed to spending some of that money in contracts. Again, they started asking for CAR 5, but there was some clarification in terms of capital investments, 3 million to a couple of locations each, a couple of fire stations each, but then they clarified that this funds would actually just go into study and design or assessment, but not necessarily the actual capital investment to get a new or repaired fire station. So, the fire department continues to advocate that they need more firefighters and obviously improved or redeveloped facilities. They explained about toxins and just sort of the gas that leaks when they're cooking, just facilities overall not being well-kempt, and just completely, some of the, some of these stations being dilapidated and needing more supports. I, Mr. President, I am requesting that these dockets remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, these dockets will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, we're on to motions, orders, resolutions. Could we start with the docket 0943, please?
Document number 0943, Councilor Mejia offered the following. Order for a hearing to explore the specific needs of Latino and Caribbean residents in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council Rurrell and Councilor Arroyo as original co-sponsors to this hearing.
Hearing no objection. Both Council Rurrell and Councilor Arroyo are added. The chair recognizes Council Mejia.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to thank community activists and our partners who reached out to our office in search of ways to really meet this moment. And so, based on the research and economic outcomes and needs of Latinos and Caribbean's in Boston, our office has filed a hearing order to explore the specific needs of these two integral communities in the city of Boston. Latinos make up 18.8 of Boston's population, and Caribbean's make up 8.5 of Boston's population, contributing greatly to the city's economic and cultural social fabric. Approximately 23% of all Caribbean immigrants in Boston live in poverty, and Caribbean immigrants have higher rates of poverty than the rest of the population. Similarly, the median income per capita income in 2015 for Latino residents was only $17,787. Boston Latinos concentrated in lower-paying occupational sectors such as services and production jobs. Not only do these jobs pay low, they often do not offer many benefits. Many Boston older populations is experiencing significant health and economic needs and facing barriers to accessing benefits and social services. They have a high risk of disability, chronic diseases, and comorbidities. Only 17, oh, excuse me, only 15.7 of Caribbean immigrants and 18% of Latinos have attained a bachelor's or higher, highlighting the need for increased access to higher education and job training programs to improve economic opportunities for these communities. Latinos also have the lowest home ownership rate in Boston, with only 16% owing homes compared to 1/3 of white and half of black residents, while Caribbean immigrants are more likely to rent their homes than overall population, with 68% of Caribbean's renting in the metro area. Latino and Afro-Latino households are denied mortgages at a higher significant rate than white households. The highest rate of home loans denial is experienced by Afro-Latinos. Evictions in Boston are coming back, up by nearly 75% from last year, and Latinos have the highest rates of evictions in the Boston area. Research has shown that Latino adolescents are more recent, and more recent immigrants have greater likelihood of developing depression and/or anxiety. Parents of Latino children are nearly three times as likely to ever have been told their children has depression compared to the parents of non-Latino children. Latino youth are at risk of joining gangs because of the school-related problems, negative labeling, and school and neighborhood safety concerns. Latino youth are also more likely to be incarcerated than white youth. Latinx LGBTQ plus youth experience bullying and harassment at greater rates than any other youth, with multiracial Latinx youth experiencing this at the highest rate. 34% of Latinx LGBTQ plus youth in Massachusetts experience bullying. 35% of Latinx youth in Mass skip school because they felt unsafe. 22% have been threatened or injured with a weapon at school. 62 have seriously considered suicide, and 37% have made a suicide attempt. As a person that identifies both as Latina and Caribbean, I personally understand the struggle many people go through to survive, which is why I believe it is past time that we start thinking about the multiple intersection needs of these two very specific communities that impact the social, economic, and political well-being. It is time that we recognize that there is a need for a dedicated office within the city government to address the needs and concerns of Latino and Caribbean communities in Boston to ensure their voices are heard and their interests are represented. Greater Boston Latino Network research has documented that the representation of Latinos in government, executive positions, and boards, and commissions is well below the representation of the Latino population of the state, and there continues to be significant underrepresentation. Other cities such as Washington D.C. has established similar offices to support their Latino and Caribbean communities, and have seen positive outcomes in terms of increased civic engagement, improved access to city services, and strengthening community partnerships. Issues of immigration, language access, housing discrimination, mental health, violence, aging, educational and economic mobility are all interwoven for our Latino and Caribbean residents, and it is time that we address these appropriately. I just would like to just go on the record to also say that, you know, as someone who came to this country when I was five years old, I understand the unique challenges of communities who are trying to just get their literally foot in the door. And so, this is just an opportunity for us to dig in a little bit deeper and understand what we, as the council, can do to support the unique challenges. And as someone who established the Black Men's Commission and the Task Force on Reparations here in the city of Boston, I think it's time for us to also look at all, and all means all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The chair recognizes Council Rurrell. Council Rurrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to the original co-sponsor, Council Mejia, for your leadership on this, and also my co-sponsor, Council Arroyo. As a son of Caribbean immigrants, this is important for me, as we heard from Council Mejia, the data on the disparities and barriers that the Latinx and Caribbean communities face. And with such a large population here in the city of Boston of Caribbean and Latino population, we should be reflecting in creation and implementation and execution of city policy, while it is imperative that we work to understand the Latino and Caribbean experience of Boston is equally important that we understand the differences between each country's experiences or the nuances between the barriers they face. So, I'm looking forward to this conversation, to start to implement strategies, and to support our Caribbean residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rurrell. The chair recognizes Council Arroyo. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor Mejia and Council Rurrell, for your leadership on this matter. Our Caribbean population is an integral part of the city of Boston, and we know that many of our families, mine included, came here for more opportunity, for a chance to make a better future for their families, and it's our job incumbent upon us to ensure that we are doing all we can to make Boston a city that gives equal opportunities to all. And we know that much of that, as this city gets more expensive for working-class families to continue to live in, that we have to look at all things, including policies that assist in helping folks transition from rental to homeownership. For instance, one of the most telling parts of this is that for the metro as a whole, 38% of the overall population is renting, but 68% of the Caribbean population is renting. And so, as we move people into homes, as we move people into jobs, as we give people economic opportunity, that is sort of our charge, and I look forward to continuing to have these conversations with Council Mejia and Council Rurrell as we continue to make Boston a better place for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Anyone looking to, the chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the lead sponsor and the co-sponsors for filing this. As you all know, District 7 is actually made up of, or the second largest population in District 7 is made up of Latinos and then Caribbean. And I just wanted to go on record and say that I'm in full support of this and is looking forward to this conversation. I really appreciated the nuances that you provided in terms of mental health, in terms of the numbers, how lower socioeconomic statuses does contribute directly or impacts our resources or connection or accessibility, as well as just understanding in terms of access. When we are canvassing in any district, I guess, you knock on doors, and the Caribbean population seems to have this culture, a very optimistic... population seems to have this culture, a very optimistic, positive, loving culture, very warm. When you get to the doors, it's usually, yes, of course, I'll vote for you, and I yearn to stay longer, just to, in that moment, capture, how can I -- how can we do this whole thing civics in five minutes, and it's impossible? But then you end up staying later, and then you start thinking about what other ways that you can intentionally and sincerely provide the civic access to people. So folks are not, you know, not wanting to be connected. Folks are inundated with work and responsibility and their conditions. So on top of that, then, to have access, it is on us as a government, I think, to provide those resources or to better coordinate so that we're doing a better job in creating access for our Caribbean and immigrant population. So thank you so very much. Just wanted to add that this includes the, of course, the Haitian migrants and immigrants that are currently here and coming, and that we should be, and we are technically, but we should work and strive to make this and improve our way of welcoming those who are already here and creating those resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Baker, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Lara, Councilor Louie Jean, Councilor Murphy. Please add the Chair. Councilors Mejia, Rurrell, and Arroyo, on this docket, we'll refer to the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 0945. Oh, yeah, okay.
Docket number 0944, Councilor Flynn offered the following: Order implementing an anti-bullying policy for the Boston City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm going to be brief. I'm filing this so we have a clear anti-bullying policy at the city council. I plan to have working sessions on this policy so that we can come to a consensus of what this policy will be like. This is a draft policy. I intend to hold working sessions after the budget session to get input on this policy On this docket, 0944, it will be referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration, but I would like to give an opportunity to my colleagues to speak on this matter as well, or to sign on to it, if you'd like. Yep, before we go on to signing on, the Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this one is interesting filing, and I look forward to conversing with you and my colleagues about this. I think that as we start to get to know each other and evolve as a council, we are learning each other's personalities and dynamics with this council. However, I feel that sometimes some of this is instigated and further propelled by the media. So we tend to exaggerate or make it seem like there's a divisive relationship here where we are just disagreeing. And then oftentimes, then, you know, the media will play a part and make it controversial or whatever, and they'll pick on my picture, and then they'll say, they'll just put my picture, and they'll say, okay, look at this picture, or they could grab an angry picture or a stupid quote, and then they'll put it there, and then they'll just capture that moment just to incite and to further get the people going. Meanwhile, we're just human beings, and we're doing our job, and here we are, and we have differences, but I think that when it does seem lopsided, so I'm interested in this conversation because sometimes the rules seem lopsided, sometimes it does feel like we're being muted, and sometimes, and that in itself is some sort of like passive-aggressive bullying tactic. And then sometimes there's tactics where folks are talking to the media or inciting the media with, you know, false pretenses that they're doing a thing and they're not, filing when you know you stand in a position or you're ready with the mayor, but you're voting us up a different way. It's like all these politics and nonsense. Can we just be really sincere about the work and not necessarily, not talk, not have to gaslight each other on these issues? Look, it is what it is. Everybody got something going on. Let's just be adults about it and have this conversation, but I'm going to have this conversation with you. I want to have this conversation with you, but I also want us to be honest, I want you to be honest, about when you have been, you know, less than fair and when we've been less than fair to you. Hopefully, that's the conversation, that we can all hold each other accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do appreciate you filing this. I have a 13-year-old who is watching everything that I say or do, and I think it's my responsibility to show up in a way that's going to teach her how to be kind and how to be compassionate. And having grown up here in the city of Boston during the height of very racial tension, I still carry a lot of that stuff with me when I walk into certain spaces. So that's just my own work that I need to do. But I think it's important for us as representatives of this body to recognize that the way that we speak, the way we show up, and how we communicate, it sometimes is part of our culture. And I think that there is something to be said about policing our ability to be fully expressed. So as we continue to have these conversations, I just want to make sure that our aggression or our passion isn't being internalized into something that is a bit, I feel, policing of sorts, right? So it's about balancing this delicate act. Just because we don't agree with each other doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to fight one another. And I think that that's not the message that I want my daughter to see in this chamber. And so I will be doing my part, President Flynn, to make sure that I'm showing up in a way that is respectful, but I also want to make sure that I'm showing up in a way that does not water down all of who I am, just so that I can be here in this space. So it's about balancing all of that. So as we continue to move through this conversation, I just want you, as the president of this council, to be super mindful of culture and dynamics and be respectful of the microaggressions that people of color have to face every single day that we show up in this world. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for offering this initiative on an anti-bullying policy. It's long overdue. I do want to raise up concerns about how our staff are treated. I think as elected officials and political animals, there's a certain level of rough-and-tumble in the dialogue and interaction between colleagues. We should agree to disagree and without being disagreeable, as you often say. But none of our staff, either central staff or staff of district counselors in this body, should face abuse, physical, threatening abuse, or it's just unconscionable that our staff who come in here every day to serve the people of Boston should have to experience abuse and bullying from any member of this body or other members of staff. And so I hope that in the context of this discussion that we can really set a new standard for decorum and professionalism. None of our, as I mentioned earlier in a previous discussion about this, none of our staff should be subject to abuse, either in this chamber or in this building or on social media. They're doing their work. They're doing their job. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Let me also add, this will only work if our colleagues attend these working sessions. I'll probably have at least two working sessions, so it's critical that each person at least attend one, so your voice is heard, so you have input. And it's critical that we treat, as Councilor Braden, our staff with respect and central staff as well with respect. And we should have had this policy in place 30 years ago, but I'm going to get this implemented before I leave as president. Mr. Clerk, would anyone else like to sign on to this matter? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Braden, Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Baker, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Louie Jean, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Murphy, Councilor Rurrell. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration. We're on to the next docket, Mr. Clerk, which is docket 0945.
Docket number 0945, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson offered the following: Resolution recognizing Malcolm X's birthday, May 19th, as a Boston municipal holiday, in honoring Malcolm X's legacy by establishing and including Malcolm X in Boston's Black Heritage Trail.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, or Council President Flynn. This week, I filed a resolution recognizing Malcolm's birthday, Malcolm X's birthday, or Brother Malcolm, as a municipal holiday, and I know that this has been filed in the past and wanted to revive it, if you will, since it's a resolution. I wanted to do my own filing and continue to file it, hopefully, urging the incorporation of its statue as part of Boston's Heritage Trail or Black Heritage Trail and providing renovation and maintenance to Malcolm X's home, family home in Roxbury. Essentially, it's part of, it's considered part of the heritage in Boston, but it's not, it's completely dilapidated. It's in my district, and I don't think that Malcolm X has been included significantly or enough in anything historic in Boston. So Malcolm, to me, and to many of us, is more than just a historical figure. He was a prominent civil rights leader who fought for the rights of African-Americans in the 1960s and a powerful advocate for social justice and equality, whose legacy continues to inspire people around the world. But for me and for many of my close friends, Malcolm X represents so much more. He was a man of great depth, who embodied values of selflessness, of love, and patience, and passion for humanity. His values have had a profound impact on my life, and I look up to him as a symbol of hope for people who have faced discrimination and oppression. These are the values that I wish to continue to encourage in Boston community and continue to bring people together. I have been deeply influenced by his teachings and philosophies, if you haven't noticed. It is evident that Malcolm X has not been acknowledged to, as I mentioned, to the degree, and his families deserve more. I reached out to his daughters and family, of course, and wanted to pay courtesy to let them know that I wanted to extend this resolution. And today, I ask you, this body, to suspend and pass. This weekend, I have been invited to be a keynote speaker for the Malcolm X Annual Breakfast. Very, very excited about this. I get all fuzzy about it. I tell my husband not to be jealous about Malcolm, because he's not even here, he can't compete with him. But I, this man represents everything to me, and I think that understanding just how kind and how humble and how selfless he was and in the work that he was, and when he spoke truth, to be able to stand probably next to Harriet, he's number two, not number one, but when he stood for something, you knew that, you knew where he stood, and he was strong in his convictions. His moral compass was never compromised, and I can only aspire, I can only pray, that God prefaces my intentions that one day that I can only live up to just even half of his legacy. So I thank you for hearing me today, and hopefully you will support this, that you suspend and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councilor Baker. Councilor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to sign on to this, but I want to add a caveat to it. I'm totally on board with honoring Malcolm X and the legacy, including in the Black Heritage Trail. I think that's absolutely something we should do, but I'm hesitant around signing on to another holiday until we get, drawing a blank, sorry, Mr. President, evacuation day back. That was a date, that was basically when our country was started, the birth of our country happened right at South Boston Heights that I can see out of my front window. So I sign on to this, I support my colleague about 80%, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or sign on to the matter? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Baker. Council, okay. I apologize, Council Rurrell, I didn't see the light pop up.
Thank you, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Rurrell.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council Anderson, for bringing this to the floor. Malcolm holds a significant place in my heart as well, but also right here in Boston in our national civil rights progress. Malcolm's father was a Garveyite, dedicated to Marcus Garvey's vision, and Marcus Garvey, as we all know, is a Jamaican leader, whose vision of black empowerment and self-determination set him on a path of self-discovery, intellectual growth, and activism. And recognizing Malcolm X's birthday as a municipal holiday will not only honor his presence in Boston, but also pay tribute to his enduring legacy as a champion of civil rights and social justice. His teachings of empowerment, self-respect, and community uplifting continue to resonate, inspiring us to continue to confront systemic racism as we strive for a more equitable society. Highlighting Malcolm X's contributions by including him on the Black Heritage Trail will allow us to acknowledge the importance of his role in Boston's history. Let us take this opportunity and hoping to get the support of all our council in passing this unanimously. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council Anderson.
Thank you, Council Rurrell. Would anyone like to sign on to this matter? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Braden, Councilor Baker, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Arroyo, Council Lara, Council Louie Jean, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council, Council Murphy, Council Rurrell, please add the Chair. Council Fernandez-Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0945. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. The docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, we're on to personnel orders.
Docket number 0946, Council Flynn offered the following:
Chair seeks suspension of rules and passage of docket 0946. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0947.
Docket number 0947, Council Flynn offered the following:
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0947. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0948.
Docket number 0948, Council Flynn offered the following:
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0948. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0949.
Docket number 0949, Council Flynn offered the following:
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0949. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. We're on to late files. We have three late-file matters. Two of them are personnel orders, and one is an order from Council Flaherty. The late-file matter should be on everyone's desk. Let me take a minute just to confirm that these late files are on everyone's desk at this time. We're going to take a vote to add these late-file matters into the agenda. All those in favor of adding these late-file matters into the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late-file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, the first late-file matter is a personnel order.
Personnel order filed by Council Flynn for central staff.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This late-file matter, this docket has been passed. Mr. Clerk, the second late-file matter is also a personnel order.
Personnel order filed by Council Flynn for council central staff.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This late-file matter has been passed. This late-file matter is in This late file matter is an order from Council Flaherty on, it's the Community Preservation Act. The Chair, yeah, yeah, please read that into the record, Mr. Clerk.
Order of Councilor Michael Flaherty, ordered that Rule 34 be suspended to allow the City Council's committee on the committee, on the Community Preservation Act to schedule a meeting on the same day of any regular council meeting, and on the same day and time as any other previously scheduled committee event, in order to conduct interviews for the open Community Preservation Committee seats. This order is necessary to have the process completed expeditiously, and have the appointees confirmed, so that proposed projects may be reviewed in a timely fashion, filed in the City Council, May 17, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As just aptly stated by the clerk, looking to move suspension of rules and passage of this, so we can suspend Rule 34, to allow me, as the Chair of the Community Preservation, to conduct the necessary interviews for the Community Preservation Committee members. We need a hearing time, and we need to interview potential candidates, and given just the tightness of the overall schedule due to budget, and now obviously redistricting, just looking for some courtesy, so we can squeeze in some hearings and interviews. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Chair recognizes Council Royal.
Thank you. Just a question, Rule 34 is the notice rule? Is that, is that the rule?
Right.
All right, and so I guess my only question is, again, I would, I would vote aye on this. My only question is, can we actually waive open notice rule in this way? Doesn't that have to be like a permission from the AG's office or something like that? Because it's not the council rule that provides open meeting law, which is what the open notice rule is. So I just want to make sure, because I would like to get the CPA committee as well, so I would like to do this. I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're not doing something we're not technically allowed to do.
Thank you, Council Royal. There's a, there's a question on the floor from Council Flaherty. I want to give Council Flaherty the opportunity to respond.
... allows the Rules Committee, the Ways and Rules Committee, and the Committee of the Hall to hold meetings on Wednesdays, other committees don't have that. That's the last paragraph, the second to the last paragraph of Rule 34. So it has nothing to do with the open meeting law.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the, to the maker of the question I'm seeing. Following Rule 34, it's allowing us to have an additional hearing on Wednesdays, has nothing to do with open meeting law, just scheduling, being able to schedule matters on Wednesdays, which are council hearing days, so we can accommodate schedules. So it reads as follows: No committee, unless authorized by an order of the council, should incur any expenses included but not limited to advertising, stenographic cost, committee chairs requesting interpretive services, policy briefing, working sessions, hearing scheduled. No committee meeting, policy briefing, working session, or hearing, except the committee and the whole. Committee on the Rules and Administration, committees of Ways and Means, shall be conducted on the day of any regular meeting of the council, which will be obviously on Wednesdays. No committee, except the committee and the whole, committee of Ways and Means, or the committee of Rules and Administration, shall be allowed to schedule or conduct a meeting, policy briefing, or working session, or hearing on that same day and time. So just looking for a, I guess a, through the chair, a waiver that'll allow me, as the Chair of Community Preservation, to have hearings and interview prospective candidates, given the tight schedule we have with not a lot of room in the calendar because of Ways and Means budgets, and what we will presume will be time on the clock for the redistricting. Hopefully that answers.
Yeah, that, that does. Thank you very much. That has my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Thank you, Council Royal. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Council Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. At this time, I did want to ask Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, I know there's an urgent scheduling-related issue hearing tonight, I just wanted to give Councilor Fernandez-Anderson the opportunity to give a little bit of information about it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Council President. I, as you know, as Chair of Ways and Means, I hold and probably have taken all of the date, remaining dates up to probably end of June. However, with redistricting, I will probably have to cancel a couple of hearings, and have canceled a couple of hearings, to accommodate different things that's taking place. But this, this afternoon, I've heard a lot from the community and advocates that the hearings have not been well attended. I've tried to explain to them that a lot is going on. Everyone here is doing their best to show up as much as possible. However, if you can please attend, this was notified, this was already on the calendar, but if you can attend this afternoon's public testimony, the community would like to give their testimonies, express their needs, and advocate for what they want in the budget at 6:00 PM this afternoon at the First Parish Church in Roxbury. I'm sure you all have the information. Yes, Dorchester, right? That's what it's called? Yes, okay. Sorry, Dottie. Meeting House Hill? Okay, so it's Meeting House Hill?
Dorchester.
Dorchester.
It's like Meeting House Hill in Dorchester.
Signed the first civic meeting in the country.
Where they held the first, what?
Civic meeting.
Civic meeting in the country?
First meeting ever, and people gathered together and talked about issues happened at Meeting House.
Oh, that's amazing.
History.
Oh, that's amazing. Okay. Well, we will be hosting this public testimony at a very, a very historic Meeting House Hill in Dorchester, in Council Baker's district. That is your district, right? In Council Baker's district. And so I look forward to seeing everyone there. I know that some people have restrictions. Please bring the babies, I will put them on my lap. Hey, be patient, if that is the accommodation that we have to make. If not, I will understand that some of us are single parents and have a lot going on, redistricting, the other stuff that I will mention here, the budget. So it's campaign season, I get it. So let's do our best to be there and to listen to our community. Thank you, Mr. President, so much for making space for me to announce it.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson, for that important announcement, and looking forward to joining you tonight. We're on to green sheets. The Chair recogn, the Chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to pull docket 0929 from page 10 of the green sheets. It's two down from the top.
Mr. Clerk, we, can we read that, but also can we poll the committee as well?
From the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 0929. Message in order for your approval, a home rule petition for a special law relative to an act, to, an act relative to district city council elections in the city of Boston, and referred to the committee on May 10, 2023.
I'm just going to give our general counsel the opportunity to pass, so, the document. Yeah. Mr. Clerk, can you please poll the committee?
Government Operations Committee, Councilor Royal.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Royal.
Yes.
Council Mahia. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
And Council Coletta.
Yes.
It's, it's properly before the body. The Chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of Committee on Government Operations, I move to amend the docket 0929. The amendment should be on your desk. I want to give folks a chance to see them. Does everybody have them? All right, perfect. The Home Rule Petition in front of us was sponsored by the mayor. Due to the decision from the United States District Court regarding the enacted and enjoined map of 2022, this Home Rule Petition extends the timelines for filing nomination papers, provides clear rules for counting previously submitted signatures, and makes other modifications to allow the Elections Department sufficient time to print ballots and prepare for mail-in early in overseas military voting. The amendments in front of you were necessary changes from the Secretary of State's Office to ensure this act would apply only to the 2023 bicentennial, biennial municipal election, and give the Elections Department more latitude to effectively carry out this election. To be clear, this act as amended does not change the dates of the preliminary or general municipal elections, but simply adjusts the times for filing nomination papers and certification of signatures. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that docket 0929 ought to pass in a new draft with these amendments that were provided by the Secretary of State's Office.
Thank you, Council Royal.
Thank you.
Council Royal seeks suspension of the rules, passage of docket 09. The Chair recognizes Council Royal.
Thank you, Chair, and just wanted to point your attention to Section 1, line 1234. It says, "The Election Department shall be 5:00 AM." It's just a clerical error, just, it should be 5:00 PM on June 13, 2023.
Thank you. We just made a script on that. So the petition for us, I see what he's saying, it says 5:00 AM, it's like 5:00 PM.
Okay. Yeah, that's under Section, Section 1 on the second page of that document, halfway down.
Mr. Clerk, as a question, are we able to pass this now, make that change?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Royal. Council Royal seeks suspension of rules and passage of docket 0929 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy.
Yeah, so I know in Section 3, it clearly states that does not affect city council at large, but do we want to just make sure that people are aware of that? If they only read Section 1, that it's very clear that this will only be district candidates having an extension?
Okay.
Just wouldn't want someone to say, well, I read Section 1, because it doesn't say there, like refer to Section 3, or specifically just district councillors. So if we just, we want to tweak that to be clear for people.
Thank you, Council Murphy. I want to give Council Royal an opportunity to respond.
Thank you. I think it's appropriately in Section 3, just to be clear, so that we can state it on the record for reporters or anybody who's here. Because this is only really for district councillors, in the sense that the enjoined map impacts district councillors at large, councillors represent the entire city, and so they can continue to receive signatures and file signatures and do all the things as they normally could. However, for district councillors, as we finalize a map, currently the lines and things of that nature could change, and so this is to deal with the district races specifically. And so I think Section 3 does make that clear, but just so that there is no confusion, state it on the record, at-large candidates should continue to collect and submit signatures because they are not impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Thank you, Council Royal. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. So the date stays the same for the at-large people?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's correct. That's correct. Thank you. Council Royal, did you want to add anything else on that?
No, thank you. We just called a question. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to take, I'm going to take the roll. Council Royal seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0929 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed in a new, in a new draft. We're on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're on to memorials. And after I, after I mention the memorials, I do want to give an opportunity for our colleagues to speak about a loved one, a family member, a constituent that has, that has passed away. For Council Royal, Council Louie Jean, Council Royal, David Lopes. For the entire city council, Mohammed Fofano. A moment of silence, please. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I just wanted to uplift Mohammed, I know that you just did, but just keep his mother, his two sisters, his grandfather, his whole family, and also his teachers at the Lee School, who came to Castle Island to be with mom, because she called them. So I just wanted to uplift that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy, and thank you for being with their family, with, with his loved ones. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want us to adjourn today in honor of, in memory of the father of Captain Hasein, of B2, one of our captains here in the city of Boston. His father has tragically passed away, and I just, he gives so much of himself to this city. I just want us to lift and hold his family up in prayer, and we're with you, Captain Hasein. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to talk about my older sister, Dottie. Briefly, she was, she was pretty different. Older sister, second mother, had issues with, you know, substance abuse, had mental health issues. She's actually one of my family members that I sectioned before, I had to section 35, how many of you know what that is. Pretty difficult. I was a city councillor when I did it. When she got taken in behind, she turned and she said, "You little MF, I changed your F diapers." I was like, "You did? That's right." But based on that, she became more healthy. She went into a program, down a Lawtzi program, for a couple of months, and when she was getting out of that program, I said, "Dottie, I think I have housing for you that has wraparound services and things like that, but you need to go to Edwina Martin first, which is a house down in Brockton, I think. It kind of is that second step to get you healthy." And in true Dorchester-Boston fashion, she said, now, she's in her 60s at this point, she said, "Frank, I'm a Dorchester girl. I can't go live in Brockton for three months." I was like, "But if you don't go there, you won't get the housing." She chose, she chose to go into Woods Mellon Shelter at that point. And at that point, I lost contact with her. I didn't hear from her for months after that, until I got a panic call. "You got to get me out of here, you got to get me out of here." Something happened at Woods Mellon, I don't know, I didn't ask any questions. We finally ended up getting her someplace. She was in Chinatown, but she was basically doing better as far as drugs and alcohol are concerned, but the mental health part never really leaves unless there's steps taken to help you. She was lonely, she was, you know, not really living her fullest life, never really went out of the house, that sort of stuff. She basically had an episode where she got COVID and pneumonia and basically died. We got a call that she died, but this was a month ago, whatever, and the Connie brought her back, they intubated her, and she, she woke up and she was good. And I went and visited her and talked to her a bit, and she was afraid to die, really, really afraid to die, but didn't really have the will to live either. We lost her last week, we loved her, and I totally appreciate that she changed my diaper, and she fed me, and she brought me to the movies, and she... she brought me to the movies and she did all those things for me because my parents were busy, whatever they were doing. They had 13 kids, they had other things going on, but just to let her know that I love her. My sister, Dottie, I've been, I've been on this council for 12 years now. She's the 11th person in my family that I've buried since the time I've been in this office. 11 people. So kind of hurts. Buried a cousin a couple of months ago, niece, brother, all my uncles, my mother, my father, my mother-in-law. So, yeah, Dottie, she was, she was a spitfire, and thank you for allowing me to honor her and just say her name on the record here and make sure that she's in the record. Thank you. Love you, Dottie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. A moment of silence, please, for all of those mentioned today. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of all those individuals that we mentioned. We are now scheduled to meet again in the Iron Arrow Chamber on Wednesday, May 24, at 12:00 noon. Before we adjourn, I want to say thank you to the city clerk, the city clerk's team. I want to say thank you to the court stenographer, to my city council colleagues and their staff, and also to city council central staff as well. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.